...appealing the zoning ordinance for 2014. Is there any matter of public comment on wishes to be addressed? Well, if not, then I'll turn to our undebated today. Carolyn Mish, she's the secretary assistant in the zoning office. Bob Riddle is here, Elizabeth Silver, and Barry Smith. And let's see, two of us, all three of us, I think this time. And we then turn to only matter on our agenda, which is the appeal of the building commissioners ruling 11 School Street Limited Liability Company for property of 15 School Street, North Hampton, map ID 31D-194. And would be valid, please, at what time?
Good afternoon, I'm Edward Etheridge. I represent the appellant's John Hogan and McDeMarcus, who have an LLC to hold their property at 11 School Street. They have renovated the property with the intent of moving here, and they have filed this appeal with the building commissioner, and that appealed the decision of the building commissioner. Their appeal is based essentially on two grounds, or upon two complaints. The main complaint is the property is not a residential property, so none of these uses are accessory to any personal uses. It's a piece of property with no residence on it. So whatever is occurring there should be occurring there. It can't occur there as some sort of accessory use. I mean, it can only occur there, but there's no accessory use of the residential use for it to occur there. Mr. Florio doesn't reside there, hasn't been a residence. The primary objections, as you can see, if you have the materials attached to our complaint and the letter to Ms. Mish, identify the complaints that they have aside from the state of the property, which we can't really do a lot about in the neighborhood. The violations we complain of are that there is a propane tank on the property for which a permit was issued for personal use. We do not believe it's personal use. While they were at their house, they saw a sign saying propane for sale. It now has a sign that says propane filling station. Several of the other neighbors are here tonight. They have seen the use or smelled gas that has escaped from the tank in the neighborhood. A completely residential neighborhood, and it's inappropriate for there to be a business use of a propane tank on the property. The second thing is that the property is lighted by a light, which is not in connection with any business use of the property that I understand is permitted. Mr. Florio's father, at one point in time years and years ago, did some auto repair there, but we have no information, nor does anyone have any information that Mr. Florio does any auto repair there. So we assert that that use is long abandoned. But there's a light that's been erected, which does not meet the zoning requirements of the city and is a nuisance to everyone in the neighborhood. Now, the principal complaints aside from the use of the property for purposes for which it's not permitted, including the propane tank, and with structures on the property being this noisome light, should be abated and not be allowed on the property, and that is the basis of our appeal. The appellants are here if you want to be heard, and there are some other people from the neighborhood who might want to speak to them.
Thank you, Nancy. I was a little bit confused when I first went through your letter, and then the prior letter, and then the prior comment that got attached to, I guess, the location as a response. So there was a permit in 2006 for the propane gas for use for helium balloon?
It says, yes, it's for personal use, yes.
So are you contesting that too?
I've never seen him fill a balloon there, so I don't know the answer. All I'm saying is the propane tank has had signs on it offering it for sale and distribution to other people. I think in a residential neighborhood, tank ought only be permitted, from the fire department's point of view, they have permitted it, but from their point of view, it ought to be permitted only in a residential neighborhood if it's connected. I had one on my house for many years. It was connected to my house. I didn't disconnect it and reconnect it when I went places or wanted to fill my other propane tank. But in this particular case, when you're filling tanks in a neighborhood, that's a commercial use, of course, not a residential use.
But can I ask my question? I mean, it looks like there was a proper permit issued for the helium balloon, right? Are you saying that was not issued properly? I'm just saying, if it had been used all along, not in the way that you're alleging it's being used, but in compliance with what the permit suggests, is there...
I don't think it should have been issued, but it's beyond the time I could appeal that permit.
Okay, so were the...
So if it were used only for purposes, even though we believe the permit was improper, I cannot now appeal that permit.
All right. So were Mr. Florio now to say, "I am only using it for helium, I only will," let's just put aside for now what may have occurred in the interim between 2006 and 2014 when you raised this, then the appeal may remain issued with the light, or is there something...
As long as it's for personal use, but I don't under... That goes back to my argument of how could you have personal use on a property where you don't live there?
Do you know how he uses his hot air balloon? Is this, is that for commercial purposes?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that question. They are not filled or used there. There may be other tanks that are filled, that are taken somewhere, that filled the balloon. He may get a fee for using his balloon somewhere else. I don't know the answer, but certainly the balloons are not used there, and that would be my definition of personal use, is you would use it there. You have no residence there, so I don't know how you could personally use it there.
I'm not sure that personal use is confined to, if you like, residential, but anybody else know?
Okay.
Is there any, or someone else who wishes to speak in favor of the appeal? Would you please go identify yourself?
My name's Mickey Miller. I'm co-owner of the house, 11 School Street, the one that we just renovated, and we abut 15. And I have to write this down, I'm afraid I won't remember it, but I personally knocked on neighbors' doors and asked their opinion of a large tank, a large gas tank. It's a 500 gallon tank, and the commercial light at School Street. And five of the abutting houses to the subject property, four opposed, the gas tank, and the commercial light. I was unable to reach the fifth homeowner. No one I spoke to thought either the light or the gas tank was appropriate in their neighborhood. Many other neighbors also voiced concern and object to the gas tank and commercial light. Not all could be here, but I want to thank those who did feel strongly enough to be here today. One of the most troubling stories I heard was about the gas tank. It was from a neighbor directly behind the property, who smelled gas at one point on his property and called the authorities. The tank's valve had been left open, and the user left the property. And it built up enough gas that a neighbor smelled it and called the authorities. What if a spark? What if a child playing with a cigarette lighter? What if somebody's smoking a cigarette? This is in a heavily concentrated residential neighborhood. There is no reason that tank is among us liable.
My question, did you personally see a propane for sale sign?
I did, I did. January and February. It's been taken down. It was a handmade sign.
He wants it now?
It says, it now is a very professional looking sign that says propane filling station.
It doesn't mean it's for anything use?
It just says propane filling station.
So in January or in February, it was...
A handmade sign that said propane gas for sale.
Did you see anything that looked like a transaction with somebody?
I did not.
Oh, sorry.
You know, the large propane tank, it's not safe in a residential neighborhood. It's not connected to a dwelling. It does not provide heat, you know, to any building. We need your help. It just doesn't make sense. Pride of ownership is obvious in the neighborhood. People are fixing up their homes. It's becoming a really beautiful little pocket neighborhood. It's walkable to downtown. People are just, you know, the kids are all playing around there. It's a beautiful little neighborhood, except for one property. And it seems as though we're not getting help to make it a safe place for all the residents.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is John Hogan. I'm the owner of 11 School Street. I'm an attorney, but I'm not licensed in Massachusetts, and I'm also not a land use lawyer, so, which will unfortunately be very clear. But I guess the thing that concerns me is I went through the file, the city's file on this, and read how a building inspector was assured by Mr. Florio that it was only for personal use, it would not be commercial at all, and then told that, you know, as you've been told, a series of signs. The one that says for sale is gone, but for the last few months, it says filling station, propane filling station. And, not very good legal research, but I Googled the word filling station, and you get Wikipedia that says it's a place where gas is sold. That's the definition of a filling station. So my concern is that the promise to stop selling it would be a step forward, but just as a statement to the inspector years ago, that it was not going to be used for sale, and it's just been ignored. And so you have something that is very dangerous, and the sale just continues. The other problem is to look at that neighborhood and look at that tank, it is just not credible that it's being used there to fill a hot air balloon. If it did, the thing that happened in Clinton, Massachusetts, recently, where the hot air balloon went and caused all this damage, it just would be crazy to try to fill a hot air balloon there. The only way it would make any sense is to transport it, open it, close a valve, and it's just not safe. And so I think that whatever, I think there's almost just this lack of candor, which is very troubling.
Mr. Florio, do you, or does your attorney in this matter, have a copy of the permit that was issued? Because I have a letter from the building commissioner to attorney Etheridge from May 2014, and he speaks of what's in it, but we don't have the actual... That's the application, don't wait off, we don't know what the...
I have the application. I'll defer to you. I'm going to defer to someone who knows what he's doing. Was there some question you had on it? It does have the note that says non-commercial, personal use only.
Right, I see that with the check off where it's approved. I didn't know if there was anything in addition to that that specified the hot air balloon. I mean, I know it's in the application, but is it, this is all that exists about the approval for the permit?
You'd have to ask the building inspector. There's nothing more that I have. Our appeal was basically on, it's quite a period of us, despite what it was approved for and not being used in that manner.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the appeal?
Hi, John Miss, I'm a butter, previous owner of School Street, and a butter on 24th Avenue. Everybody doesn't understand the hot air balloon. They don't put gas in the hot air balloon, they put gas in tanks, which the flame inflates the balloon and makes it fly. So, like I say, it's a business there. He's filling tanks for his balloon, and I don't know who helped anyways, it doesn't make much difference, but anyway, so there's a hot air balloon business that's there. And sometimes I wonder why, ever since the beginning, yeah. Autobuy shop, or welding shop, or whatever, how did it evolve in the past 40, 40 years, like that, but anyway. Anyway, so that's...
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the appeal? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak, so who wants the appeal, who wishes to speak for the building's sake? Yes, sir?
I'm Louis Hasbro, I'm the building commissioner. And I first need to apologize to attorney Etheridge. I didn't respond in a formal letter, I did it by email. And the second thing I need to apologize for is I didn't in email address the issue of the light, which I'll get to, but I have researched our, the building department's records, and that's been a non-conforming property as far back as I could find, which is 1970. The propane filling station was put in in 2006 in order for Mr. Florio to fill the tanks for the hot air balloons that he operates. He doesn't operate the hot air balloons out of that location, but he does fill his tanks there. And that was, that use was approved by my predecessor. And at that point, there was an understanding, and I believe it's as a part of the application that Mr. Florio made, it does describe the use that he was seeking permission for as filling hot air balloon tanks.
The application doesn't say what hot air balloon it'd be used for?
I think that there's, the implication is that there's only one use for hot air balloons.
Well, I don't know. I mean, you can take rides on them, you can sell things to them.
I can't speak specifically to that, because I wasn't party to that specific discussion.
So you don't know whether the hot air balloons are used solely for personal use?
At this point, I do, and I know that at this point, the hot air balloons, people do get rides in the hot air balloons. I'll let Mr. Florio address whether he charges them for that. I have no personal knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I wasn't aware, and it certainly wouldn't be allowed for Mr. Florio to sell propane out of his facility. I think propane filling station is a descriptor, not of the sale of the propane, but what the tank is for, as opposed to the use of propane for heating a house. I would disagree with attorney Etheridge as to whether there could be an accessory use to a commercial structure. It's clearly allowed in our zoning ordinance, it makes no reference of use, descriptor of use, the definition of accessory use as to whether it would be a residential or commercial structure. And as far as the light goes, I will order Mr. Florio to either remove the light or change it for a light that is, meets our current ordinance, which is to say no glare would be allowed outside.
Great. Can we, at least with respect to the appeal, can we take the light issue off the table then? That is that you will investigate and you will maintain an enforcement proceeding with respect to that?
And if it becomes an issue, it will at all likely to be back for me. But I don't foresee, I don't see a problem, but...
Thank you very much. I'm not sure if you wish to speak. I forget your name.
My name's Charles Sennowitz. I represent Mr. Florio. And I think we have to put things in perspective here first. I've heard a lot from the appellants of, somebody said this, somebody smelled that, somebody saw this, and any courtroom that would not even be permissible unless that person's here telling that. So we've heard a lot of scary things, but I think...
But you have the personal knowledge about a sign?
Yes. That's the only personal knowledge we've heard, but...
Well, that's a pretty big piece of personal knowledge.
Except Mr. Florio denies ever having put any sign like that over there. But I think we have to go back to, I have copies of various documents. I think you were talking earlier about a permit for the, for the tank. You had that on?
This one is not yet?
No, it's not on top, but I have a set of, for each of you. Yeah, that's the permit, it's in here, that's the permit application.
I'm ashamed of myself, so...
Yeah, I have it. Sorry if I said... But as, the document on top is the zoning permit application, if I put everything in the right order. And you'll see that the application talked about installing the propane tank to be used to fill the tanks on the hot air balloon. Obviously, you don't fill the hot air balloon on that site, because it goes up. So that was the reason for it, and he was through the process of a hearing and being vetted on all of that at that time, and that was, I think, in 2006, and it was approved. And you can see on the last page, it was approved, it says non-commercial, personal use only, and the personal use being to fill tanks for the hot air balloon, which was described in paragraph six.
I think we first four pages of that use is in the rest of the...
What did you miss?
So what we don't have starts with your, 2007, or from that ability?
Okay, you don't have this.
We do, we go in the...
Okay.
Because that was not that...
All right, so anyway, that, so that was allowed. That was allowed in 2006, his zoning permit application. As attorney Etheridge correctly said, the time to appeal that would have been within, I think it's a six-year period, but it's gone by. That, he went through the process, it was approved, and he has the right to have that tank there for that purpose, to fill, to fill the tanks for the hot air balloon. And that, you don't even have authority to overturn that part of that, because he was granted that. Now, in addition to that, in 2007, he applied for a permit, and there's a copy of the permit in there from the fire department for the tank. And they set some conditions about installing bunkers, and you have that too. So not only did he get the zoning permit allowed in 2006, but he went through the process of having it inspected by the fire department and licensed, approved. He received a permit for that as well, back in, I think that was 2007. And this use is a non-conforming, you'll see from the property records that he's been conducting, he and his father, since 1968, auto repair, auto servicing business on their property, and all your property cars indicate that that's a permitted use for that property at this time. So in spite of some of the allegations that it's not, can't be used for that, it can be used for that, and it also, I believe, can be used as an accessory use.
Can be used for auto repair?
Yeah, it's been there for 60, since 60.
Right, it's a non-conformity is for auto repair.
When was it last used for auto?
It's being used now. And you'll see, he has a business certificate, he filed in March of this year even, listing the business, and automobile, welding, and repair. There's a business certificate that shows it, and he's done that, he and his father, father's no longer alive, and they've done that continuously since 1968. So he's invested a lot of money in all of this, because he's gone through the proper procedure, he's been permitted, went to the zoning ordinance back in 2006, he's gone to the fire department, got approval, went through their process, and he would deny any commercial use, by the way, or he doesn't sell this, this propane, does not sell the propane, uses it to fill his hot air balloon, and...
And what about this hot air balloon? Does he sell rides on those?
I don't know if he sells rides on those, but even if he did, it's still not, the propane is not a commercial use.
Oh, that's all that it all? Who would think of using propane to sell rides to the balloon? It's not personal use, commercial, explain that.
I disagree with that as well.
Well, I think, anytime I sell something, then that's commercial use. It's as a business of selling stuff. I think files tax returns, does he sort of list sort of income that he had got?
I don't understand.
Will Mr. Florio tell us?
I'm sure Mr. Florio would be glad to answer some of your questions.
Will Mr. Florio, will you tell us, what is the status of, sort of, that here, in the building inspector's report, it said that you have a hot air balloon business? Is that right?
I own a hot air balloon, and that happens to be, that propane, if you list for the hot air balloon, that's my hobby. That's an interest I have. I also, I also fly an airplane that I keep in North Hampton at the airport. I don't do anything commercial with either one. That's a whole different license.
You don't sell rides on your balloon?
That's for my own personal use.
And you've never had a sign on your business saying propane for sale?
To my knowledge, there has never been a for sale sign on that tank enclosure, to my knowledge, I have never had a sign on it. There is a propane filling station sign in there presently, because a sign is required by the fire department to have what the content is. So I perhaps, in error, should have deleted the filling station part of the sign, because that's a sign that they issued me, the original person, the people I bought the balloon and the tank from issued me that sign. I should have perhaps covered up the filling station, so that the fire station, the fire department would know that's a propane tank issued to them.
But I don't know that...
I still have a few more. Yeah, just a couple more. And as a result of, you know, the request to the building inspector from the appellant, and again, they talk about uninformation and belief, and they think this is happening. The building inspector went out, and you have this email to attorney Etheridge that says that he has personal knowledge, apparently there was a vehicle photographed, it's supposed to be somebody else's vehicle, and he has personal knowledge that belonged to Mr. Florio, and it's used in his hot air balloon, that he has personal knowledge that Mr. Florio uses the building for automotive and equipment repair, and said he checked with the fire department for a permit, and I gave him a permit. So he's complied with everything from 2006 and 2007, and he does not use it for any commercial use. And he went through the right process to get all these things allowed. Just because somebody moves it to the neighborhood in January and decides they don't like the tank, and start this process without maybe investigating as much as they should, I think Mr. Florio should be harmed by that, because he's put a lot of money into doing something. So I think he should be... In terms of the light, we're not arguing, the light, the light is owned by, I think, Massa Light, but, and there was a, Mr. Florio told me, there was some kind of a shield at one point on it, which would have taken some of the glare away, but, and that broke in some storm, and so that may be a way of remediation, or lesser wattage or something like that. We're not arguing, so...
Mr. Florio didn't check the insurance?
Something, yes. And I think the remedy would be if Mr. Florio were in violation of this special permit, not special, violation of this zoning ordinance or anything, would be to find, not to take away, because I don't think he ever thought of taking it, number one, but...
I don't think he ever thought of it either.
Well, I think the building inspector, I don't know. I'm not all out on that.
So how many tanks are filled for this? One tank that fills one tank?
He fills one tank at a time. I think he takes two or three to go, I think it's a balloon. But it's the same as, you know, there's arguments in here about going through a neighborhood and everything. If you go to Walmart and buy a propane tank for your gas bill, you've got to bring it through the neighborhood as well. It's the same thing, same type of thing.
Can't buy a newspaper. Then who runs the Autobuy, the auto shop?
Mike.
He works there?
Mike, right, Mike? You work at, you run the Autobuy?
We run, it's a auto repair facility that we're only doing, restoring automobiles for shows, auto shows, and that sort of thing. It's not, we don't do commercial work there. We don't do spray painting here. It's primarily enclosed, the building is air conditioned, we wear everything inside. We try not to make any noise there, we're not there late nights or anything else.
How many people work there?
Just myself and once in a while, friend. Just myself and once in a while, friend.
So you're not really doing repair, Mr. Florio?
We are for the general public, yes.
You are doing repair?
For the general public, but only for specialized work. I won't, if you brought your car to me, I wouldn't fix it. If you brought me a 53 Studebaker, I might consider restarting it for you.
So it's restoration?
Restoration.
It's not repair?
Repair, type of restoration.
Do you know what the business was before you?
Pardon me?
Do you know what the business was before you, the auto business, the auto repair?
Long ago, it was an electronics repair shop owned by a man named Robert Miller, and he used to install automotive radios long before we purchased the car.
But the direct predecessor, when you bought the property, the prior owner, what did they do there?
They automotive repairs.
General, not the special?
Not the specialty, specialty is this time.
So it's like, were you making a living doing that part of it?
No, it's a part, it's partially, partially. I'm going to be making a living there, I hope shortly, because I'm getting out of everything else.
So, Mr. Florio, you've owned the property since 2006, is that right?
Pardon me?
You've owned the property since 2006?
Before that, I don't remember, it was around then. I think I've owned it, my father passed away in 91, and I think I've owned it since 1993, but I'm not sure I would have looked at the records.
You inherited your father?
Was he the auto business, the repair business?
My father, partially. And I was, and I, and myself? I don't understand.
At what point did it change from being, you know, just a general car auto repair to a specialty car business that you're doing right?
Probably, probably in mid-'70s. I repair heavy equipment, and I keep my, that's a little multi-part of it, the world is there, I repair heavy equipment, most of the heavy equipment I repair, you couldn't bring there, it's out in the field, it's, so that, that's the base of operations.
What kind of?
Like bulldozers and cranes and big trucks and rolling, heavy equipment.
So I'm confused because first you're saying that you have this specialty auto repair, and the person before you did regular auto repair, but now you're saying you've had this since the mid-'70s or mid-2000, I'm confused.
I think what he's trying to say, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but he's done auto repair all the way through, and restoration is auto repair, by the way, I think, correct. But he's always done auto repair or vehicle repair there, and part of it is restoration of vehicles is part of that auto repair.
And your father brought the property? And when did your father buy the property?
1964.
Sixty-four, and you and he worked there in auto repair until his death in 1991, was it?
Right.
And then you inherited the property in 93, and continued the use, continued?
Continued, that's right.
Now, why would you have, why don't you just fill your hot air balloon tanks with a hot air balloon, a station or a depot or where do you fly?
When you, when you hot air balloon, you do it because of weather and what they call thermals, which means air coming up, heated air coming up from the ground. So when you fly your hot air balloon, you either fly it in the early evening like right now, or in the early morning. So if I have an early morning flight, finding a station to fill the balloon is difficult. I had to go in many cases, or if I flew this morning and wanted to fly again this afternoon, I would have to go to Gosha to fill the balloon, for example. So putting in my own tank was a convenience. And I can also shop for price because that's another advantage.
You're buying as a bulk?
I'm buying as a bulk. I just, as a matter of fact, I just shopped for price for a couple of weeks ago for hot air, and I found anywhere from $1.99 to $3.75, so...
So are you being quiet to you and me?
Well, I would understand that urge to get a big tank and have your tank in the convenience of that. So you've addressed pretty well that you're not selling the propane for profit or for use other than your hot air balloon. It is pertinent whether you're selling rides or not, because then it's a business and it's part of the business use. But the larger question, and you've also talked about the use for auto repair, so there's this, this package of problems that have affected the neighbors. And so they've apparently been trying to figure out how to resolve it. I haven't heard that there were a lot of personal conversations and if there were ways to mitigate the harm or perceived harm. Is there a way to decrease your impact on neighbors? And at this point, we're looking at an appeal of, specifically, so the zoning board, we have our jurisdiction right now, we are asked to appeal building inspector's permit that allows the tank, correct?
It's actually an appeal of lack of enforcement. So it goes under a request for enforcement for this use that was perceived to be not allowed.
Right. So we, we see a fire department permit for the tank. And, yeah, there's some required placards, whether they apply to use a business or not, isn't so much the concern, the concern I have is that there's a, there's a problem in the neighborhood. And, you know, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to find your hot air balloon, and we want to work on your cars. So there's a whole constellation of problems that happen with something like an auto repair business, and that's why we end up with zoning. That's why there is zoning, because people get affected. There's a smell of gasoline, there's a smell of motor oil, and a smell of spray paint, and a smell of Bondo, whatever, that isn't so appropriate in the neighborhood. Those regulations are getting tougher and tougher. You know, we have to have, you know, air collection and scrub the pollutants out before the air is exhausted. So there may be a handful of regulations that will end up being enforced on your auto repair business, that might end up helping the neighbors be less concerned about the use of the property. So it's, it's a whole thing, it's been bubbling for a few years here to get us to this point. And so I'm, I'm thinking, what can be done to shift it? It sounds like you're agreeing, okay, I'll fix that light. But it's been broken for some time, and you haven't fixed it yet, and so that starts to look like...
On the light, okay?
Yeah.
The light was installed in the spring of 1968. It was a different type of fixture. It had a shield on it that was, that would only allow the light to shine on the building itself.
Sounds good.
That was the original intent for insurance purposes.
Insurance?
Insurance on the building.
Oh, I see, for security?
Security for the neighborhood, security. A couple of years ago, I can't remember exactly when it was, probably in 90, or 2002 or 2003, the light gave up, it wouldn't light. So I called the electric company, they own it, I rented. They came down and said, oh, that light is no longer available, we've put a replacement on. And the light that's there now is a replacement, and it doesn't have any shields. If we need to get something different, we can do that without a problem. Okay, that's up to the electric company. I will contact them, there should be no problem, okay? If it's too much, if it's too much of a problem, I will do something different, okay? So that basically was equipment that they installed, not me, that I rent from. It's about $30 a month, okay? But it also security, it's also security for that neighborhood, okay? As a matter of fact, there was a street light on that pole that lit the street on the opposite side of the pole, they took it down because I'm paying for that light, okay? I will contact, I have some friends that will take care of that.
We even asked you to consult with the building inspector, sort of, for all of that, because he has the specifics.
We could, we can specifically measure candle power and everything else if need be. I mean, the electric company will work with it, because they worked with me before on the original light, with no problem.
You use the gas in this tank to fill only your balloon?
I only, I only fill my balloon tanks in the trailer. And the tanks that are in the balloon are inspected yearly, I know those tanks, I know what they are because I'm part of the inspection when I inspect it from Vermont. It has to be done by a federally licensed person to inspect those tanks.
Your total tanks that run the balloon from Vermont?
No, it has to be inspected, and the man that inspects it is from Vermont. That's where I have to bring it to get it inspected.
How often do you use these?
Often? Probably twice a week in the fall.
And how many tanks are there in the fall?
Well, this is the best time of year to fly.
So is it less often other times?
Less often.
The most frequent is twice a week?
Yep.
Okay, how many tanks are there?
There's four 10-gallon tanks.
And so how long does it take to fill those tanks?
Fifteen minutes.
Total or each?
Fifteen minutes total.
So you only use these a total of 30 minutes a week in the most frequently used season, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we're not, I'm not there, it's not, we don't fill the balloon very much, no, I mean, we're not there very much.
And you've never, the propane in that tank has never gone to anybody other than your four tanks?
Not to my knowledge.
Well, who else is there that would notice?
I don't know. I'm, I'm calling...
I'm asking for a direct answer. I mean, you have to never allow anybody else to use the propane besides your four tanks?
My four tanks, yes, that's all that I know of.
And the propane is secured, you can't, the body stand, you can't just come up and open up the tank?
No, that was one of the requirements of the fire station, that when I first put the tank in, the tank was placed on concrete blocks, and I had to go to this hearing, which you have a result from, to the fire station, and I had to put a fence up, commercially, a commercial chain link fence, six feet high, that's locked, okay? And...
Okay, so Mr. Florio, before you said you're the only person that works in this place, you don't have any employees, right?
No.
Okay, so you keep saying, not to my knowledge, do you know if anybody else uses propane?
I, I don't...
Does anybody else have access, that you give access to?
No, I, I don't, I don't know.
So is it some reason you can't unequivocally say yes or no, that you're the only person and you're just using it for these 30 minutes every two weeks? Is there anybody else using this propane?
I leave the gate unlocked sometimes when the propane filling people, the vendor, are coming to fill the tank.
You're not there when that happens?
I'm not, I'm always, I'm not always there when they fill the tank because they tell me they're going to be there at Monday morning at eight o'clock, and they come Tuesday afternoon at four, you know, that's it. So the people I deal with, they know, and as a matter of fact, I'm going to issue them a key so that the gate will be unlocked. But I cannot tell you, my knowledge, I have never filled another tank other than the balloon.
That's just not a knowledge, that's what you have or you haven't. I'm not talking about the times that you're not awake and then, although I would suggest that you not leave this unlocked and that you can make an appointment, but that's neither here nor there. But that, my question is, you know, when you've been there over these decades, have you ever had a lot of this propane used by anybody other than your four tanks?
I'm sorry, do you have the...
No, I, I'm...
Sorry to make you nervous. Did you wish to speak?
Yeah, I'm a...
In favor of these building inspectors?
Right, I'm Mike's neighbor, right across the street, 18th Street.
And his name is, I'm sorry?
Joe, yeah. And we've been there.
I'm sorry, you're right.
D-I-A-L-T-K. And we've been there since the late '70s. And you know, you know, talk about commercial use, whatever he does at his property, it's very quiet. I mean, you know, he's got a welding truck that goes out every once in a while, he's got the balloons, which we watch leave from the porch and come back in the evening. I mean, you know, we sit on our front porch and watch the world goodbye, so it's, we have pretty good knowledge of what happened to the property. We've never seen any hint that he's selling the propane.
Have you ever seen a sign with, there propane for sale?
If it was a hand-lettered sign, I'd never see it from where I sit. Yeah, and I don't go wandering around his property to look at it.
You didn't see it from where you sit because?
Because of my eyes and the distance.
So, but would you see somebody if they were just coming in?
Yeah, yeah, no, I can, we can see well enough for that. I mean, there doesn't seem to be any commercial activity as far as selling the propane. I mean, I see him pulling with his vehicles, I don't actually see him filling his tanks, I assume that's what he's doing, but I don't, I don't witness that. You know, it's like, and as far as the auto repair being noisy or, I don't think, we've been there a long time. You know, we have, granted, we have a fairly big buffer between our property and his actual garage. There's a good expanse of, there's a few large trees, there's a, what, 50, 60 feet of line, something like that. So, you know, we have a pretty good buffer.
Sorry, we missed, we're across the street.
Across the street, directly across the street.
But do you know that the auto repair is not on the tape? I mean, our sole issue is...
There was something to talk about, the neighbors complaining, and I don't want to be lumped into neighbors complaining because I'm not complaining.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
The only other thing I'd like to say is there's a van sitting on the property now. I'm sorry.
Can we finish up with your safety place and then we have to...
No, I have, no, I am, I'm going to ask again.
I will just, I'll just put in one thing, my name is Anne Bialik, I was like that. It's just that he's a quiet neighbor, he's usually accommodating, I mean, he has a fairly good-sized parking lot, and if you ask him, and it's a very narrow street, not that much parking, he'll very often let workers or whatever use the parking lot, so a good and comfortable neighbor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you...
Again, Mickey Miller, the neighbor. Positively, there was a sign that said, "We're paying gas for sale," positively. There's also a van sitting there today that advertises balloon lights. So something is not honest here.
Mr. Florio, is there a van on it which advertises balloon lights?
There's a van parked there with a sign on the front of the van that says, "Balloon chase vehicle." And on the side? On the, on the side of the trailer, it says, "That trailer was bought used," that's not my sign.
I think he's conceding that it says balloon lights.
Well, and I think the number on that van, the trailer, is not, you dial that phone number up to get it on.
No, I don't want to... What's on this van and what's on yours? Is there...
I think they're confusing van and trailer.
Would you care to be Mr. more specific?
It's a trailer.
And what does it say?
I think I have...
And, Mr. Attorney Etheridge, do you have any response to the performing use issue?
No, our issue remains the same. It was assigned for sale, and while we didn't see any sales, that's the concerning issue. We'd like some security, I mean, Mr. Sinowitz said you could find him, you can't find him, of course. You can't find him, of course. Mr. Hasbrook can find him, but having found that it's all perfectly, only for personal use, he's not about to find him, which is why we brought the issue, which is part of the discussion that's here. We'd like some certainty. While the facts have been in some, I don't want to say dispute, but at least at odds, what sort of things we could be assured of that if this is allowed to be there. The most assurance would be if it's not allowed to be there. But if it's allowed to be there, assured to be there, that the use would be somehow or other guaranteed or limited to be personal use. And I guess the light is off the table. He's agreed to take care of it and/or the building inspector's agreed to enforce the ordinance. So in either of those regards, our concern is not. But the concern for the tank remains the same. Our view is the best enforcement to make sure it's not sale or used commercially is not to have it there. But if you can find a lesser means with appropriate guarantees, that's your burden. But that's our burden.
Sir?
Yes, could I invite myself?
Hi, I'm Star Florio. I am sister of Michael Florio. I live kitty corner across the street on Fourth School Street. And it is my understanding when I first heard your presentation of your buying the property that it was going to be a residential property that you fixed it up, but you have no intentions of living here yourself, is that accurate?
True.
So that wasn't made clear. This is a property that he bought for rental use. He will not be living there.
Right.
And his main issue to appearances seems to be the fact that the tank is unsightly to him and he finds it a little difficult to rent his property or sell the property with a propane tank next to it. And my argument would be it was there and he bought it.
You know, picture of trailer.
Jeff Massimino, I live in Thirty Four Ford Hill Terrace. I've known Mike's family for a long, long time, over thirty years. I walk by there all the time. I've never seen a for sale sign. Federal law says you're supposed to have some kind of propane filling station and you can get a hand brick one there, but unless I see photographic evidence that there is a for sale sign in there, something don't smell right.
Can you say, say you want to say anything?
Can you say you have a photo?
Yes.
It's not a great shot, but it's good.
AeroStat promotions, advertisement, balloon rides, corporate promotions. The, uh, with some blacked out. And that's the, it's a, it's a Fox trailer.
The number that's on your hand, the phone number, is that a working number? Does that belong to you?
That trailer has been lettered, was lettered when I purchased it. The phone number is not valid. So I should remove the decals from it and our driver will go, but it's nothing that I installed.
And AeroStat is not the name here for the right business? Or is it?
Did you hear the question?
No, I didn't hear it.
AeroStat is not the name here.
Is that...
No, you listen to me. What is your name?
I just go under Mike Florio, I fly the balloons from behind you.
I just have one, a question, I don't know where this falls in, but I had a, I only, I had a couple of calls about the wanting to understand clarification about the application from the business. But one was from, um, Richard Juusto, who called me last week and said he was a partner of yours.
He is a partner.
And said he was concerned about it because he, um, that it was a balloon filling station or filling tank for your business, the balloon flying business.
For the balloon.
And so he had, so I don't know where that fits into this, but I just, he was concerned that he wasn't going to be able to come here because he had already had a flight scheduled and he'd have to cancel it. So I don't know if that's related to, he also fills his tank with you or if he just was...
Mr. Juusto was my balloon partner in the balloon and I'm learning to fly it. He's my instructor. So that's his concern.
How long have you been flying there?
I've been flying balloons for about six years. I have some health problems, so I couldn't continue to get my license. I have a private pilot's license for aircraft, but the balloon is a separate thing. So that's what we do.
So, but the permit for this is from two thousand and seven?
Two thousand and seven.
So...
That's when I bought it, somewhere in two thousand and six, somewhere in that area.
And put in the propane tank to fill your hot air balloon which you didn't start flying for a year?
Yeah.
But you are flying it now. You said...
Once in a while, yeah. I am flying as much as I can. I should be up tonight, it doesn't matter.
How many balloons do you have?
Pardon me?
How many balloons do you have?
Just one. Just one.
Before we can just... I have a lot of questions, I just can't just... I'm a little confused about the call from Mr. Juusto and saying he was a partner and what that means.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, that's just the way he commented. And I thought he was going to be here, so I didn't really take any notes or anything.
So he said he was a partner of Mr. Florio's and he was concerned that about the appeal
because they had been using this for, you know, they got a permit back in two thousand and six and so it was approved then. So he was concerned that it was now a question of yours.
So did he indicate that he's currently using the propane?
Um, that's what I, that's what I was led to believe in the conversation. But again, it was, you know, I thought he was going to be here because he meant, he said he was going to be here. So I didn't bother to pursue it further because it sounded like he would come and explain it.
Well, we're not bound by the hearsay rule, but, um, did Mr. Juusto in this conversation with you give you to understand that Mr. Florio had a commercial business with the hot air balloon?
That, that's what my assumption was after the end of the conversation, that there was all, it was for use of filling their balloons for the balloon business.
Did he say that explicitly, do you remember, or is that just your, your understanding, your supposition?
Um, he said that it was part of their hot air balloon business and they built tanks for that.
So, um, I'm, I'm thinking about this as, he's got...
Have we sort of do, have we gotten all the information that we're going to get? And that is you close the public hearing and then discuss it amongst yourselves?
You might want to keep it open in the event that there are more questions that you want to take from either the applicant or the appellant or the property owner? Just to get clarification, because I know you had discussed going down a concern about whether or not it's personal use or commercial use and sort of it might make sense to either have more clarification or if you might need to continue the conversation, continue the hearings. Now, Mr. Florio, um, please come forward again, sorry. I don't know if you've heard what Ms. Mish just said, but it sounded like in this phone call, Mr. Juusto was representing himself as your partner in using the propane for the balloons.
Business, the business, let's see this.
Yeah, I mean, but you said you're operating completely on your own without anybody else and it's just your own personal flying and you don't take anybody else up for any business. So, so how do you...
I'm not licensed to, I'm not licensed to. I'm not, I'm not a commercial balloon pilot license. I'm not licensed to that.
So you don't go up personally?
No, Mr. Juusto does balloon flights with other people.
What do you mean with other people?
Well, with other balloonists, he's commercially licensed to do that. I am not. I am not, and my balloon is not.
Does he get, get his propane from your tank?
No, no, my balloon is the only tank, the only tanks that are filled.
But he flies your balloon?
He flies my balloon with me as my instructor.
And other people?
No.
Just you?
Just me. Unless we, unless we take somebody up for a fun ride, that's not commercial.
So he only fills your balloon with your propane and he fills his other balloons with somebody else's propane?
Uh, I'd like to suggest that we have a property that is preexisting nonconforming with a use that is commercial. I'm not sure I care if they sell rides, if that's commercial. I mean, it's true that it was represented as personal use.
Approved for personal use.
Approved for personal use. But this is our existing use, welding and equipment of our air shop. So, you know, I, I have the animal size and I'm, I am looking at, there is this preexisting nonconforming use and I, it seems to me that the auto business would have a little more impact on me as a neighbor than someone filling the tanks periodically. I'm not particularly concerned about the tank itself because, you know, anybody who has a house not directly on a gas line has a tank, two, three to five hundred gallons. And it is permitted. Perhaps there is, perhaps there was a mistake and someone left it open at one point and there should be some safety measure or inspection for it and stuff like that. I'm not seeing...
I can explain that leakage if you, if you would. When the propane tank was first delivered from Beamer Propane in Boston Berry, Connecticut, it was set on, I started to say, it was set on a concrete, it was on set on concrete blocks. It was partially filled, only somewhat partially filled. Now, this was investigated by the Northampton Police Department, okay, at the time. One Saturday morning, Nancy, who's here, well, she's outside now, called me. I was out doing something. She said, "The propane tank is leaking." I went to the yard immediately. Now, the propane tank hadn't been filled yet by any vendor. It only was there because it had been delivered. Something, a squirrel, whatever, an animal, had chewed through the hose, the filling hose. The valve on the bottom of the tank was open. Not to my knowledge, I didn't open it, but that's the way it was delivered. Beamer sent a man up right away, Bruce Beamer sent a man up right away and put a new hose on it. But the original hose had been chewed right near the tank by something. And that's when it spilled, that's when the fuel came. I have since caged that area with wire so that even if, even if an animal does get into the fenced in area, it can't chew that hose. Animals have been known to, in the hot air balloon business, have been known to chew the propane lines. There's something about an attraction with a rubber and a propane on it, whatever. The other thing you have with a hot air balloon that you have to be very careful of is mice. If mice get into the storage area of the trailer, and I make sure my trailer is always locked, they get into it and they chew the fabric, or something in the fabric that attracts. This is not a, it's a great thing, it's a beautiful hobby, but there's a lot to it. There's an awful lot to it. And I enjoy it very much and I don't want to lose it.
Thank you. So perhaps we should examine the, the, the exact language of the appeal in front of us to address it narrowly.
Well, I don't know. I mean, Sarah, you're going on and talking about the auto repair business and all sorts of things, but you're completely outside the purview of our appeal, which is now being. So I'd say we ought to narrowly address the question of the propane tactics if that's the thing that has been appealed. Very good.
It seems to me that we have, there was a permanent issue for the tank for this use. We haven't really seen any evidence that it's not being used for what Mr. Florio assesses being used for.
I think all this should come in in our discussion of it because I think we've taken on all the evidence that we can get, so we want to close the public hearing.
I think motion to close.
Who is going to vote whether that is...
It's very...
I was like... Okay, that was... So that's right. Yeah, okay. So there's a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Are you a second? Uh, she's not moving. Oh, listen to her.
No, 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 Sarah has to.
Sarah has to. She's a little bit late after that start. I don't know whether...
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think the information was probably, she was five minutes late. I think there was a lot of discussion about that initial.
Okay, sure, first of all.
So I, I...
Do you second that time?
What's your number?
Yeah, go ahead, Sarah, vote second.
I'm going to, um...
Because you're, 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 um, you're both association members.
Okay. Therefore, it is decided that if you...
I guess Bob is...
Second.
Bob will vote, okay.
Second.
Okay. Second. All in favor of the motion to close? So for discussion, so amongst this, um, Bob, you...
Just what I said. I don't, I drove by the property and I'm a, I'm claiming to place up with the old light bulb. But I don't have any jurisdiction over that. I mean, Mr. Hasbrook, I don't, it even says in the, there's a, some, that it doesn't even need to be an assuming foundation, it just needs to be a firm footing, you know? I'm sure.
Ask, that is that in order to overturn the building inspector's decision, we will need the evidence, right? All three have to agree. So it sounds like we're losing. And I must say that I agreed with Bob, so I think the unanimity is not going to happen.
I think there was double negative somewhere that I lost track of. Perhaps because it's an appeal of a nonenforcement, so it's, um, so it's naturally doubled. So let me, that's what I was, let me ask if, would you please state the question that we are deciding?
Oh, so I think the question we are deciding is whether the use by Mr. Florio of the propane stored in that tank is for personal use. And so my feeling after hearing all of the evidence, I don't see that there's conclusive or even proof, sort of a preponderance of the evidence to show that in fact the propane is being used for some commercial purpose.
I think you have to add that it's not commercial for some reason, so those, both that you could be personally used for some commercial, so I think those are essential elements of your conversation.
Well, I would think that if it were to, the appellant's or anything were to get sort of conclusive evidence, pictures, something like that, that this propane that he was selling the balloon rides, I would imagine that he could go back to the building inspector and sort of complain. It's just that as we have it right now, my perspective is that the finding of fact has not been established. Of course, the burden of proof is on the appellant.
And apparently, Mr. Florio could sell balloon rides if he wanted.
Yeah.
Although he is a business partner of Mr. Juusto.
I would leave it there. He would leave with the...
Yeah. Right? Uh, so, uh, what I, what I'm asking was for clarification of the general issue we're deciding, which to, with my understanding, is an appeal, the desire for the building inspector to enforce on the propane issue without addressing the lighter issue at all, that's going to be separate. So, I think, I think we can make a motion, and that will help clarify the positives and negatives.
Would you make the motion, please, sir?
Ah, yeah, we're doing it.
And do a positive there, either to uphold the building inspector's decision or to reverse the building inspector's decision.
I move to deny the appeal of the commission's rule. With respect to the pre-existing non-conforming use of propane, we're not talking about, we're not talking about whether the propane was, was pre-existing non-conforming at all, we're just saying, with my ability, commissioner, on Eleventh School Street. Just regarding, regarding...
Not the light. Not the light, no, the light was conceded, yes, sorry.
So, would you deny the appeal by the building inspector's ruling on Eleventh School Street?
Also, okay. All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much, yes.
Yes, there will be hearings on, uh, Olive...
September, but...
Yes.
But there's some, no more comments?
No.
And that'll be a continuation.
Yeah. Alan's on, right? Um, this is a new hearing, there'll be a couple of signs, maybe two signed applications.
I wish I'd written a formal letter, made it easier, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm looking at my emails, I should have done that. Mike, I think your, your decision was, we all...
Yeah, that's your position, your importantest position, by taking the position.
So, first, on Eleventh, would this continuation that you're talking about?
There was a continuation without opening an appeal for, it was another appeal of the building commissioner's decision up on Olive Street, the best not to let go of her.
She was like, I've already said, that you said, well, I'm...
Yeah, I'll have it next year.
I was confused.
Yeah, no, it is.
Is that the Edward property down on Olive Street?
Uh, Sam, Greg Sam.
Oh, okay.
Sam.
That's on Olive, I think, that's on Olive.
That's not on the eleven, no, that's on October one. Uh, what was she saying?
She's saying the eleven is not, that's the continuation.
How's it called, by the way? We are still...
We are, so why don't we address this hearing?
Motion, you're... Not make motion, nature.
Second.
All in favor?